Good morning. I call to order the April 23rd, 2019, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
I ask that you please stand, join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion does carry. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for April 9th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of April 9th, 2019 as presented.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the county commission minutes of April 9th, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion does carry. Item number three.
Approval of county commission minutes for April 16th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of April 16th, 2019 as presented.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the county commission minutes of April 16th, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion does carry. Item number four.
Oliver Hag Scholarship Awards.
And Rick Lehmer.
Good morning, commissioners. First off, I'd like to welcome this year's Oliver Hag Scholarship winners and their guests to the meeting today. Welcome. A little history on the scholarship. In 1991, the late Oliver Hag willed Celine County 1,100 acres of land. It was Oliver's wish that the land be used for farming and ag-related education. The profits from leasing that land pay for these scholarships. Since 2001, Celine County has awarded 41 scholarships to Celine County seniors entering college and majoring in an ag-related field. Our scholarship committee met April 1st and was very impressed with the group we have here today. So with that, Blake Bell, please come to the mic.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to thank you for the scholarship opportunity to further my post-secondary education. I'm going to go into farming ranch management at Hutch Community College this fall to further or keep the family tradition of Celine County farming going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Caitlin Elder. I really appreciate this opportunity to have received this scholarship. It'll be helping me pursue my career in ag education. My hope is to inspire other students to love and appreciate agriculture as much as I do. Thank you for this opportunity.
Caitlin, what high school are you from?
I go to South High.
Salina South.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Madison.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm really grateful for this opportunity to receive this scholarship. I plan to attend Colby Community College in the fall and major in pre-veterinary medicine. Thank you.
And your high school is?
Salina Central.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kyler Cox. I go to Bennington High School, and I'm grateful to be a recipient of the Oliver Hag Scholarship because I love agriculture and I can't wait to be able to help people learn and show them the experiences that I've had through agriculture and being in Florida to show me that. And so going to K-State to major in agriculture education is something I'm really excited about. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so good morning. My name is Kaylee Heimer, and I go to southeast of Celine, and I'm super passionate about agriculture. And I'm very thankful for the opportunity that you guys give us each and every day. And so I'm going to K-State to be an agronomist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nick Davenport, and I'm currently a senior at El Celine High School. I would first just like to say thank you for this scholarship opportunity where I can use this scholarship money to further my education at Butler Community College where I'll be majoring in ag business. And my ultimate career goal is to go into ag law and eventually own my own law firm where I can work with farmers and ranchers when dealing with water and land rights and make sure that they have the representation they need. So, thank you again.
Very good. Rick, these scholarships are renewable.
They're renewable for four years, yes.
And, okay, very good. I'll step out down and have each of you come up one at a time for a picture to be taken, and I'll present you with your certificate, so. And the first is Blake Bell. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then the second is Caitlin Albert. Congratulations, Caitlin. Madison Prowder. Congratulations, Madison. And Kyler Cox. Congratulations, Kyler. Kaylee Heimer. And Nick Davenport. I think over the period of about, what, 200 meetings now, this is my favorite thing that we get to do every year, and I congratulate each and every one of you. Keep your grades up. Your parents will be very happy with you. As a parent and a grandparent, I can tell you that it's pretty neat when your kids get scholarships. Keep working hard, and it'll get you somewhere, and good things happen to good people. So congratulations to each one of you. Any further comments from any commissioners? So congratulations, and we're happy to do it.
Good job.
And we do have a lengthy agenda today, so if you wish to leave, you may. This is not going to be a five-hour city commission meeting, but I know, so. All right, we will move on to item number five.
Livestock and Expo update.
Good morning again.
Morning, Rick.
We'll start with the noxious weed department. The balance in the noxious weed capital outlay fund is $75,298.17. Deposits for chemical purchase, purchases since January are $9,391.81. And I might add to that, there's been a lot of area farmers coming in to buy this chemical, and they're saying that the musk thistle this year is going to be really bad. So if you have property out in the county, you might want to go check it out. The annual noxious weed management plan has been filed with the state of Kansas. The weed supervisor and administrative aide attended January Weed Directors Meeting in Salina. The weed supervisor and chemical applicator attended the Weed Directors Conference in Manhattan. Expo Center, I have a PowerPoint for that, but there have been 106 event days since January this year at the expo. County Farm awarded six scholarships. Balance in the farm account is $182,588.61. Those three-year leases will expire March of 2020, and pasture leaseholder will be turning cattle loose in the pasture May 1st. They will be out by November 1st. Moving on to the PowerPoint. I just got the call yesterday. Kansas Equafest is moving their show to Celine County. It will be held March 4th through the 8th at Tony's Event Center and Celine County Expo Center, and they're going to hit the ground running. We have a planning meeting Monday with their board, but I'm very excited to have them at the facility. For a facility manager such as myself, it's like a dream event. It's something that you want to see on the calendar because it's a huge, huge show, huge economic impact to the city.
I think the projected attendance to that for a three-day period is somewhere in the neighborhood of somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 people. It is a big deal, so.
It will take, definitely take up that whole area over there for four days.
And I think we should thank and applaud the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Salina, the Bicentennial, or the Tony's Events Center. Rick was very prominent in doing that. Roger and I also were part of the equation, so it's a big deal.
Yes, it is.
It's going to come together at the right time. You know, our downtown is tore up right now, but not by next year. Well, it should be on the ground running, and we should be in good shape, so way to go.
58th Mall Patrol Rodeo. This is their annual fundraiser for, and what they do with the profits for this is they buy rescue equipment, just things that they need. Friday night was a little light on attendance, but Saturday night, it was pretty full in there, so it was, it was all around a good show. Kansas Square Dance Association, this is another show that we share with Tony's Event Center. They, they have their dances over in our area, and then they have their meeting at the Tony's Event Center. Whoops. A R C Chili Feed, this is their annual fundraiser. This benefits Salina Blue Thunder Special Olympics Team. Another long-time event that we've had. 30th Caps Auction. This is their annual benefit that makes up 40% of their budget, and they serve families in Celine Dickinson and Otto County, and their service is free of charge, so it's a, it's a great organization. Salina Speedway Banquet, this is their annual awards banquet that we've had for about three years now. I didn't realize there were so many people that were at the Speedway, but it draws a huge crowd. Salina Gun Show, we have two of these a year. Pretty popular event, another long-time show. Carden Circus, this is a new event to the Expo Center. This is the first three-ring circus that has been in Ag Hall in over 38 years, so we were, we were glad to get this show, and then we have these folks booked for another two years. It was pretty cold out, so the animals were all in the barn that, that week. 54th Mid-America Farm Show, this is put on by Salina Chamber of Commerce. Their Ag Division Committee organizes all this. All the vendors I talked to had a good show. They, they sold a lot of stuff and were very pleased with the show. This show actually started in Ag Hall with 40 vendors, and at that time, it was called the Material Handler Show, so they've grown to over 300 vendors since then. I love that food truck. I think that is really cool. They also use 4H Building for numerous lunches and meetings. This is a cattle handling clinic that they had during the farm show in Ag Hall. Spring Beef Show, this is early beef show at the Expo Center. Basically what it is, is 4H kids bring these cattle in, getting them, you know, getting them used to trailering and getting them used to handling. It's kind of a tune-up for the fair before they bring them all in for the fair, and it was a pretty good turnout, about 75 head. This is our schedule for May. That time of year, livestock shows are coming back. We got Kansas Cowboy Desade Show coming up. We have a large Area Six Miniature Horse Show coming up, and of course, the Kansas Meat Goat Show. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. It sounds like you've been pretty busy over there, and we're going to continue to be busy. Hopefully, as everybody probably knows, we can get our lease situation straightened up with the, with the city and proceed from there, so.
That would be helpful because I'm getting into situations where I need to honor some long-term leases, and I, I can't do that right now.
We're totally understanding, and I'm, keep your fingers crossed is all I can say at this stage of the game, so. All right, well, thank you. Any commissioners have any comments or questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. We'll move on to item number six.
Minimum Maintenance with Cunningham Road.
And we have Darren and Tim.
Good morning, commissioners.
For the public, Darren is our Road and Bridge Administrator, and Tim Hamilton is the Dickinson County Planning and Zoning Administrator that we share with Dickinson County, and, and that's working out pretty well, I might add, so welcome, Tim.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
We're here to review the procedures for declaration of portion of Cunningham Road as a minimum-maintenance controlled-access road. This is a procedure that we started back in March. We are at step four. I did prepare an RFA such as the procedures outlined. I'll go over that a little bit for the public, just kind of touch briefly on that. This is a request for controlled action on a section of roadway that has already been declared minimum-maintenance road. The petitioner, John Tinkler, along with other concerned property owners, is requesting the need for controlled-access facility. This section is a minimum-maintenance road that only serves as access to property. During inclement weather, it is torn up, requiring excessive maintenance. The owners would like to control the access so that when the weather is good and they need to access their property, they have a travelable road to do so. Beginning at the, at the northwest corner of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter, Section 26 Township 14 South, range 2 west of the Sixth Principal Meridian in Celine County, Kansas, then south along section line between the east half of the northeast quarter and west half of the northeast quarter and the east half of the southeast quarter and the west half of the southeast quarter and the east half of the southeast quarter of said Section 26, a distance of approximately 4,145, and terminating at the northwest corner of a parcel at 2303 South Cunningham Road is located on the west side of the described line. The attached road petition has been reviewed by the Road and Bridge Department. The petitioners have been advised that if approved, the adjoining property owners would pay the initial cost of the gate installation. Upon completion of the gate installation, the county will provide locks and any future maintenance need. The commissioners did advise me to proceed to the next step, which was for the commissioners to go view the road. Upon doing that, they made a determination that parts of these roads may be declared minimum-maintenance, and the commission instructed the county council to draft a resolution describing such roads. We're here today to adopt the resolution and then get, transmit copies to the Planning Commission for Recommendation.
Okay, Tim, do you have any further, anything else to add to this?
Basically, that this would be scheduled for the Planning Commission for their June 3rd agenda. I have to publish 20 days ahead, like with any other type of zoning case, and so once they get that recommendation, you know, after that meeting, then I'll schedule it for the next available county commission meeting at that point to let you know, and I'll have a, an RFP, like what, what Darrell just put together for you.
Okay. Questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission then for. Would you like to approve the request for action on this? Is that correct, Andrew? Okay.
Would you like me to read the resolution?
Well, just a number at least.
It's 130-19, excuse me. It's a request for action, number 130-19.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass RFA number 130-19, dealing with the minimum-maintenance on Cunningham Road.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 130-19 for minimum-maintenance in Cunningham Road. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
I would like to add, there will be public meetings on this.
Right.
There will be more public meetings for, for public input.
And that'll be with, what, how far, what are we looking at, two weeks, or, or will it be more towards your?
It would be, well, I know the Planning Commission will have the one, for sure.
Right, so it'll be after that Planning Commission meeting that?
Yeah, there'll be another one before, bring back to the commission.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your attendance, and thank you for working on it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number seven.
RFA 136-19, data center upgrade.
Good morning, Brad.
Good morning. Information Technology is requesting permission to expend $61,985.62 with Eagle Incorporated of Salina on a data center upgrade. Celine County budgeted $62,000 in the 2019 technology improvement budget for this project. The plan is to procure two new VMware host servers, one Nimble HF20 storage area network device, one three-host essentials bundle of VMware software, and one Commvault software live sync application for 10 virtual machines and two network, and two Dell network switches. This upgrade will replace our current storage area network device, the EqualLogic 6100E, with the Nimble HF20. The HF20 upgrade is needed in order to meet Celine County's current and future application data storage requirements. We received two total solution quotes for this project and two additional quotes for some of the individual items in the request. The, the Eagle software of Salina solution quote, the upfront cost was $61,985.62, and when you add in the, the maintenance costs over a five-year period, that number, that amount is 106,857.84, and that includes the upfront cost plus five years' worth of maintenance on this solution. We also received a, a complete solution quote from the, from scale. That, that total, total cost with an upfront cost of $59,967.25, and when you factor in the five-year maintenance costs, that number goes to 114,379.09. We also received an HP Enterprise quote on the Nimble Storage Array of $49,066.53, and we also received a, a quote on the two, on the two new servers for $14,170.16. Alternatives for action you can approve as presented, deny the request, or send staff back for more research and consideration. Staff recommends funding this project through Eagle Inc. of Salina for $61,985.62 upfront. That's based on the upfront expenditure plus the five-year maintenance costs, the total amount of 106,857.84. The scale solution upfront cost of $59,967.25 is lower than the initial quote from Eagle by 2018.37, but when you consider the maintenance costs over the five years, the Eagle solution is 7,521.25. I do believe there might be a math error on your RFA, and that, that number, corrected number is 7,521.25 in savings. The overall five-year cost is the basis for our, for our recommendation to go with the Eagle solution. This project will take care of our application data storage needs in the data center here at the courthouse for the next three to five years. The Eagle solution will also get us to a disaster recovery site. The county determined in late 2018 that the newly remodeled Road and Bridge facility would be our primary disaster recovery site in the event the courthouse became on fire or whatever the disaster might be. Our plan for the DR site is to move one of our existing network, network attached storage devices out to Road and Bridge. We would put, we would install that in the data closet out there. We would also take one of the new servers that's in this recommendation out to Road and Bridge, and we would also include the, the Commvault DR, or Site Recovery Manager application in that as well, and we would make that a replication target for our, for our applications and virtual machines here at the courthouse that we rely on. Critical applications that we might include in that replication could be our finance and accounting software, tax application software, appraisal software. We, we have choices. We, we could make, we could make the decisions on what's the most important thing we would need in the first 24, 48 hours a week and, and have those applications available. The data replication to the DR center will occur after business hours when our bandwidth usage is minimal to Road and Bridge. We have a plan- When our bandwidth usage is minimal to Road and Bridge, we have a plan in place to move our phone system connections and our internet connections out to Road and Bridge in the event of a disaster. This budgeted expenditure will give us a leg up on our continuity of operations plans as well as meeting our continuing data, application data storage needs here at the courthouse. As I said, the budget impact, there was $54,000 budgeted in the 2019 TIP budget for the data storage upgrade, and there was an additional $8,000 included in the TIP budget for a new server. If we combine those two requests, that totals $62,000 in the TIP budget. One of the, one of the positive consequences of this disaster recovery site, we might be able to save $2,080 on our, on our maintenance contract with CIC because we now, today, we replicate our finance and accounting application out to the server farm in case we do have a disaster. We could bring that back if we decide to do that. So there's a potential savings on that contract of $2,080.
And just on the quotes, like from Eagle, there are nine different line items versus the Scale solution of only four line items. What's, what's the difference there?
We considered Scale. Scale technology is a hyper-converged technology, and I don't want to get too deep into the technical weeds, but it takes away, it takes away hardware items that you need in order to do this virtualization technology and moves them, all of the, all of the technology is wrapped up in a component, in a single component. And one of the things that is appealing about, or can be appealing about this technology moving forward is this maintenance cost idea. You pay maintenance cost on one item as opposed to three or four. In my mind, that's not there yet. Hyper-convergence is going to come. We will, we will, by doing this project, we are putting that decision off for three to five years. So in the, in the data center, that technology is coming, and it's very appealing as a technology person, it really is. It has its benefits. I was, frankly, I was kind of surprised that the five-year maintenance costs, you know, numbers that we had to deal with, obviously, things can change over five years, but the numbers we had to deal with today, I was surprised that the Scale solution came in higher over the, when you consider the five-year cost for maintenance. So, and like I said, the Scale solution basically takes and provides us with three components, and those three components would give us the required data storage that we were, that we were requesting that we needed.
So in other words, with Scale solutions, their four line items would do the same thing that the nine, that it takes nine line items on Eagles to accomplish?
Exactly. And there are, there are obvious benefits to a, to a hyper-converged environment. You know, you have to know a lot more about the, about the multiple items in the Eagle solution, and you, while we would have a learning curve getting to the Scale solution, it's a much, much less complicated environment to deal with. Honestly, the Eagle solution is what we conceptually have today, and it's, it works pretty well. We don't spend a lot of time fixing it or tweaking it or anything like that. It works pretty well. So, that is, that is a difference, and the hyper-converged environment is coming. It will, it just makes sense.
Okay. There are further comments or questions from the commissioners?
One of the things I look at is, there's with the maintenance cost being that high, much higher, is that I look at it as that it's a newer technology and we're paying for their R and D, you know, for their software development. That'd be my put on that.
Yeah, I think when we, you know, maintenance costs on our part are really an investment, an investment that we make. If we were to go with the Scale solution, that maintenance cost would be, would be an investment in their R and D staff, in their ability to maintain those devices and provide you with, you know, with spare parts in 24 hours. So, yeah, I agree with that.
Back to the budget portion of it, we budgeted $62,000 this year, and we're going to spend $61,985?
Yes.
Okay. And the five-year maintenance program is $106,000, which is what, $21,000 a year? Where does that fit into the equation? The twenty, extra $21,000?
Today, we're already expending maintenance contracts on our Dell EqualLogic, the VMware bundle that we have in, in the, in the house here. So, these, these maintenance costs are costs that we have today. This, this solution actually adds, I think, I think it was about, I don't have that number with me, but I think it was...
Five or six thousand?
Five, $5,000 in addition to what we're paying today. So, so that's, we have those, we have a majority of those maintenance costs today. This solution will add about five or $6,000 a year to that, to that maintenance cost that we have today.
I guess I'm still not clear then where that money's coming from, out of which budget that money comes from.
We, we put a line item in for what we call MT computer in our budget line items, and that's, and that pays for, for maintenance costs that we have throughout the year. It's a general courthouse expenditure, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Further comments from the commissioners, questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 136-19 as submitted for a data center technology upgrade as requested by staff.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve of RFA 136-19 data center upgrade. Further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion does carry. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number eight.
Tribe Rivers Fair Board 2020 Budget Request.
And good morning, Kim.
Good morning.
Tribe Rivers, Kim Norwood, Tribe Rivers Fair Board Member.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, thank you so much for your support for the Celine County Fair Association. A copy of the Profit and Loss Statement from the 2018 Fair is enclosed with your letter information. The P and L statement clearly demonstrates how critical, excuse me, your support is and the entire fair board certainly appreciates it. Appreciates it. Allergies. We would also like to ask that you consider some additional contribution toward an entertainment event to be hosted by the fair. Those events generally cost in the range of $25,000 to $30,000, and we intend to find as many sponsors as possible. On the other hand, just as the Smoky Hill River Festival would not be successful as it is without the support of the city of Salina, we feel a major entertainment event for the fair cannot be successful without additional support from the county. Last year, we requested a contribution of $20,000 plus an additional 10 to help defray the cost of a special concert for the 2019 fair. We would like to renew that request. Any and all help is very much appreciated. We thank you for your support for the 2019 year and for any additional support you can make towards the concert. We look forward to your continuing support for the 2019 fair and will schedule a time to meet with you in this regard. Yours truly, Celine County Fair Association.
Comments, questions from the commission? All right. Well, thank you for the presentation, and as you know, we're into our budget season, so we will take it into consideration.
Thank you for your time.
And thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Item number nine.
Chamber of Commerce 2020 Budget Request.
And we have Don Weiser, the president, and Eric Brown, vice president, who is also the president-elect, I believe.
He is the incoming president. I have one more week, and I am retiring, so, but I'm pleased to come before you. Thank you for your past support of our economic development program that we have at the chamber, and we appreciate that very much, and thank you for letting us come before you today with the 2020 request. Eric has given you some information there we want you to take a look at, and what I'd like to do now is, I think most of you know Eric, but I want to introduce Eric Brown, who is the incoming president, CEO of the chamber, and he has a few comments he'd like to make, and then if you have any questions or you'd like to review that information, you certainly, we'd certainly like to answer any questions now and here in the future too. So, Eric?
Thank you, Don. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Eric.
Thank you. Like Don said, I am the incoming president. Commissioner Vigerson, you mentioned something that today was one of the best meetings you enjoy because all the graduates, well, we have a graduate right here, and he's graduating into retirement, so hopefully we can continue down this path of having a positive meeting. So, we definitely, as the chamber, we appreciate everything to Celine County and the partnerships we've held for so many years. Rick was saying, the Equifest, that is, that is a big show, and I appreciate Commissioner Sparks, Commissioner Vigerson, and Rick, and Andrew, working with Joanne McClure in our office to put that, that visit together, and it'll go a long way having them here. But what you have in front of you, you do have the Profit and Loss Statement or the position of our financial statement anyways from last year, and economic development, that's something that you all have, have supported us in our efforts, business expansion, retention efforts, workforce development, talent recruitment, retention. It spreads, it's complex, it goes over a lot of different areas, but we are asking that you maintain the $30,000 request and also $5,000 that you have also supported for the Military Affairs Council, which is a division of the chamber as well, and that $5,000 supports military affairs and what they do with events for veterans and also assisting veterans with emergency funds. So, it's an exciting time. The other item that you have in front of you that we gave you is a document called Imagine Salina. This document entails a program of work that we have started on using private funders. We have, as the chamber went out and raised $1.5 million for the next five years to work on these initiatives. There's a lot of momentum happening in Celine County, in Salina as a whole, and so, this work is geared at expansion, retention, and also a lot of talent recruitment and retention. So hopefully, those folks that received their Oliver Hague Opportunity Scholarship, we can keep them in the loop and maybe get them to boomerang back in years to come. So, with that, like Don said, we'll keep it short and sweet. If you have additional questions, please reach out to me, and I'll answer any questions you have at that time.
Any immediate questions or responses from the commissioners?
I'd just like to say thank you for this handout that you gave me because it says what the chamber does and what the EDO does.
Right.
And I know, this has been going on for a couple of years.
Right.
But I still say that some people in the public don't know...
Right.
...which thing is helped, is handled by whom, and this is helpful.
Yeah. I think the short answer to that is, I kind of try to say it's four pillars of economic development. It's new business attraction. The second one is expansion, retention efforts, keeping what you have, workforce development, talent recruitment, and then entrepreneurship. And so, really, the EDO is in charge of new business attraction. We're in charge of expansion, retention, workforce development, and then we share entrepreneurship, and so, that's startups, Salina, and Project Open and those types of, so it's, we all have to work together to continue down this road of strengthening our community.
By the way, pass along our congratulations to Joanne and Sylvia, both from the Visit Salina portion of the chamber, because I know that they, they really spent a lot of hours...
They did.
...getting that Equifest in here, so hopefully, that'll be the big deal. And Don, correct me, I think it's 43 years?
Forty-three years.
Forty-three years with the Chamber of Commerce and Salina service to the city and the community, pretty outstanding, and congratulations on a well-deserved upcoming retirement, and don't spend all your money at once, you know, when that social security starts rolling in, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Remind me again when the event is? Are we having a retirement?
Reception Wednesday. At 1:00 to 6:00, and they're all welcome to come.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, again, congratulations on a, on a well-deserved retirement, so, you're welcome. Thanks again for your presentation. We'll move to item number 10.
OCCK 2020 Budget Request.
And we have Sheila Nelson Stout, the president, and Pat Valerius, vice president of OCCK.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Come on, Sheila.
Thank you.
Have you ever done this before?
(laughing).
I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and first and foremost, I appreciate the partnership with Celine County and all of the counties that we have that allow us to do services throughout the nine-county area to people with disabilities. OCCK is in its 49th year of operation this year, so next year, we'll be celebrating a big milestone, and we served more than 3,200 people this year in a variety of ways to keep people in the community and independent and functioning in their lives. So, it's an exciting time, there are lots of things happening. I brought two people with me. First, Susan Sprague is Director of Expansion and Communication for OCCK. I think I talked to you last year about beginning some services for people with Alzheimer's and dementia, so Susan is spearheading that project for us, and I wanted her to give you an update on what's happening with that, and I think you all know Patrick Valerius, our chief financial officer. Pat's going to talk about transportation and those types of services, so. I wanted to give you an update over about a couple of services that I always visit with you about, but I think they're so critical in the community. First is assistive technology services. You know, those are services, first of all, we offer services to anybody with a short or long-term disability, and a short-term disability can be going to the hospital for surgery or having cancer, and, you know, you come out of the hospital after a hip replacement or a knee replacement, and there's all this equipment you need to be able to go home with, walkers and shower chairs and all of those things that help you get well. Well, many, many years ago, OCCK started a loan library, and when we have that type of equipment, that is free for people so that you're not hit with, you know, two or $3,000 worth of equipment that you're going to be done with in a couple, three weeks. So, it can be as simple as something to help you pull up your socks, because, of course, after surgery, you can't reach your feet, or as complicated as a communication system that talks for children that can't speak for themselves. So, we work with, we have, this last year, we worked with a little, little one that was six months old that was running a computer system that spoke for her, and then the story I'm going to tell you is about a 94-year-old. We had a referral from a 94-year-old lady who had macular degeneration and was struggling to stay in her home. She couldn't see to pay her bills, she couldn't read the papers, she couldn't read recipes, she couldn't do any of those kinds of things anymore. So, her children reached out to us to talk to us about how we could help with some magnification devices, and she was interested in those magnification devices, so we helped with a phone that she could see the buttons on. And then, she was a brave soul, and she was willing, as opposed to magnification devices, she was willing to try a computer system. And so, we set her up with an Apple computer system that magnifies, that you can speak to, and so, she can read her paper. She can also keep up with her grandchildren on Facebook because before, of course, she can't see a phone, and so, you know, she can see Facebook in a larger picture, and actually, she's teaching her grandkids how to crochet using FaceTime. She can see what they're doing, and they can see what she's doing. So, that's an exciting story, very simple, straightforward, you know, spend a couple weeks with her, and then we go back when she, you know, when she gets stuck and doesn't know what to do with the computer. So, anyway, it's a really nice story. She's living independently, she doesn't need us anymore. Another story is a young man who was in college, and he was in a car accident and had a spinal cord injury, and he wanted to go back to college, but he had no use of his arms at the time that we met him. So, we set him up with a computer and a pen that you can speak into, so he could record the professors, you know, what they were teaching about, and it translated to his computer, and he could also speak to the pen that would translate into a paper for his computer, so he was able to go back to college. He's continuing on to get his education and go out and get a job. So, those are really exciting short-term services. We worked with 25 farmers this last year through assistive technology services to help them or their family members keep farming, so that's always fun to go out and find solutions for farmers. for farmers. We also do employment services for people, because all of us want jobs, and jobs are very important to your independence in life and not being in poverty your whole life. So, last year, we assisted 92 people to get jobs in the community. The average wage for those jobs was $9.94 an hour, so we're really proud that, you know, we're helping people find above minimum wage, good jobs that they can become independent with. We also host every year the Employment Expo. I think last year was our 29th year. We had 28 businesses that were seeking people to go to work for them, participate in the Employment Expo, and we had over 350 people who were looking for jobs come in and connect with those employers. So, they take applications on-site, they do job interviews on-site, the employers do, and it's a really nice way for people to get connected. We assisted 260 other people to stay in their homes using Attendant Care, so help with showers or a little bit of cleaning, and those kinds of things are very important. And Pat and Susan are going to talk to you a little bit about other services at OCCK.
Let me ask you a quick question. How many counties do you serve?
We serve nine. It depends on the service. Our primary counties are nine counties, but like agribility, we go across a third of the state. Some of our technology services are more than nine counties, but primary for the 49 years have been nine counties.
And that's the number I was looking for.
Yes.
Thank you.
And those counties all came together to partner to start OCCK, so that was, they've all been with us for all of those years, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good morning.
Good morning.
OCCK began Alzheimer's Support Services last May. During that time, OCCK has delivered or has helped 27 families. They have participated in the reducing disability in Alzheimer's Disease supports through OCCK's services. In addition, 35 families have benefited from information and assistance over the last almost a year. OCCK has responded to people's individual requests for help, things like needing a lift in the home if someone has fallen, and we have been able to provide that lift for several families through our loan program at no cost to the family, and the caregivers and the individual they're helping have been able to remain in their home. We have helped to facilitate support groups. Caregivers have asked us to help get started in their community support groups so that they can share encouraging thoughts with others experiencing the same situation, and we have simply been a listening ear to families that are experiencing distress related to either caregiving or just caring about someone with Alzheimer's Disease. We continue to grow our Alzheimer's Support Services and our outreach. We're partnering with Salina Regional Health Center and KU Medical Center, the Alzheimer's Disease Center, to bring a national training group to Celine County that would be open to Celine and surrounding communities. We've been chosen by KU Alzheimer's Disease Center to pilot an Alzheimer's Prevention Program in the counties that we serve. OCCK also provides brain injury support services. These services are provided in the community and include cognitive and behavioral therapy, speech-language therapy, physical and occupational therapy. And again, these are therapies provided in the home. They come to you, just like the Alzheimer's Support Services, they come to the family. Maybe the best way to share with you the brain injury support services available at OCCK is to give you an example. We worked with a young man named Michael. He was your typical, successful young person. He worked full-time, he was married, they were thinking about starting a family, and he was riding his motorcycle, and he wrecked. That wreck resulted in traumatic injury to his brain. He entered a hospital, then he entered a rehabilitation facility, and finally, he was released home with OCCK Brain Injury Support Services. That was a year ago. He is now back to work full-time, and he's living his independent life. In July of this year, the state decided to expand services to people with brain injury. It has been for those only caused by traumatic events. It will, in July of this year, it will open up to people with strokes, encephalitis, things that aren't traumatic, if you will. And those brain injury support services will be available to more people in July of this year. We're very excited about that. That's all I have. Do you have any questions on Alzheimer's or brain injury?
It's just amazing what's happening. Well, it's certainly services that are needed, that's for certain, and we appreciate your efforts in that regard, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Pat.
Morning, Pat.
As Sheila mentioned, we're in our 50th year, and I think it's appropriate to say that the great partnership that we've had with Celine County and the Celine County Commissioners throughout our 50-year history, you certainly made it possible for some of the expanded programs that we keep getting into in some of our diverse services, so thank you. I want to talk briefly on some of the things that's going on with public transportation. As you know, one of the major, one of the departments of OCCK is our public transportation services, and the reason we're so heavily into public transportation fits very well with on our mission and our philosophy of independence and affordable and accessible transportation. And as your saying goes, you can't really be independent without a public transportation services. 2018 certainly showed a growth in both of our para or on-demand services, which people call up and request services from point A to point B. Majority of those services are medical in nature, whether or not to the hospital or clinics. Our CityGo Public Transfer Fixed Route Service in Salina continues to expand. 2018 saw two months of our highest ridership, so that service continues to grow. We did over 323,000 rides in 2018. 284,000 was fixed route, and almost 40,000 was para. Now, we serve a big geographical area. We go, we take passengers from Salina to Wesley Medical Center, to KU Medical Center in Kansas City, to Topeka Hospitals, and throughout. Of the 200 and, or the 300 and some ridership within, the total ridership, 95% of that ridership was created either in Salina and/or Celine County. We do go outside of the counties, but the majority of that ridership is certainly here. One thing that happened in 2018, which kind of shows what confidence people have in us and the service that we provide, Salina Regional Health Center contacted us and asked us if we'd be willing to take over their transportation for passengers to and from the hospital that they've been doing for years and years and years. They decided that we could perform that service equally or better than they could, so in 2018, we contracted with Salina Regional Health Service to take over that service. Couple new things, well, not new, two years ago, of course, we started the 81 Connection Route. We call it from Belleville to Salina, stops in Concordia, Minneapolis. Obviously, Salina, Celine County is the biggest beneficiary of that, because most of the ridership, of course, are coming here. Medical and shopping, two of the biggest issues. Following up on that, we're working with Kansas Department of Transportation, K-State Salina, and we're in the beginning process development stage of having an intercity fixed route between Salina and Manhattan. Basically, K-State Salina asked for this, so the students are going back and forth between K-State Salina and K-State Manhattan. Also, Cloud County Community College is very interested in this route, so something we're trying to put together with KDOT and K-State. We have, continue to have a very good relationship with the Kansas Department of Transportation. We've been fortunate that our funding has continued not only to be steady, but to actually increase. You hear the stories about money being taken away from KDOT to serve other functions of state government, but public transportation, as far as we're concerned, it continues to grow. Another thing that's happening, I didn't attend the City Commission meeting last night, but we're entering into agreement with Salina, because our bike-sharing program would be on some of the city right away. So, Blue Cross and Blue Shield contracted us and wanted to know if we would provide what we call, they call a bike-sharing program, and throughout the rural area, and this is a first in the state. Some of the metropolitan areas have bike-sharing programs, but we're looking at going into eight of our counties. Salina, of course, being the biggest, would have five bike racks with bikes located throughout Salina. So, it's kind of interesting what kind of Salina, we're kind of excited about it. We don't know exactly how it's going to go, but we hope to kick it off the 1st of July. But all in all, transportation is, will continue to grow, along with independence, we think, not only Celine County and Salina, but the other counties. With having available public transportation keeps people within the community. They don't have to move, they can stay, as long as they can get to and from, get the services they need and the medical help they need. So, again, thank you for your past support, and thank you for listening to us today.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from anyone, for Pat?
Thanks.
Okay.
We've included in our packet our request for this year, which includes an increase. We continue to get requests for more services. You know, we're in a very rural area, and so there aren't a lot of companies wanting to come in to provide specific services in our rural area, so we try to continue to broaden, and we're certainly continuing to get requests. So, we would appreciate the increase, but more than anything, we appreciate the support that you do give that allows us to do as much as we can. So, thank you very much.
I think I see in your letter here, 210 people are employed in Salina alone.
Yes, yes, yes. We have 210 employees here, about 280 total, so we keep adding employees as we add services for people, so.
Pretty significant, and I guess we should thank you also for your efforts for the community and the things that OCCK does and accomplishes and brings to the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. We'll move on to item number 11.
RFA 137-19, Third Quarter Budget Adjustments.
And good morning, Annie Griebus.
Good morning.
And Sherry Cross.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning.
The first item is budget adjustment. This is the time of year, we run on a fiscal year, July 1 to June, and so this time of year, we start looking at line items in our budget that need increased funds where we've expended and where we might have other areas of excess. And so, we're requesting permission to move a total of $32,897.72. They're coming from two different grant items. Behavioral health, some substance abuse treatments that we expected to utilize have been lower need this year, which is a positive. That's a good thing. A lot of the services we're offering at no cost in-house now, so I think that they don't have to go out and expend those dollars on client services as much. So, some available funds to move over to cover expenses for training and supplies for our behavior-based programming and transitional housing is what we're asking to move those funds from. And then, under the Adult Supervision Grant, we've had a lot of staff changes with our new pre-trial program and a couple of the others leaving. We've had some vacancies and staff also choosing not to utilize the health insurance benefit, because they already have that within their family coverage. So, that leaves us some salary and benefit excess funds, and due to that, we are able to move those funds over to the increased training expenses. When you hire new staff, they have to commit to many trips to Topeka, Kansas City area, Wichita for training. So, those increases are increased expenses, and also our drug testing supplies is an ever-growing expense, and so we're asking to move from that, those grant item, line items, to those other items I just mentioned that are in need. It doesn't change any bottom dollars of any of the grants. There's no change. These are not county dollars from the general fund. They are grant dollars from the Department of Corrections in two separate grants. This is a process DOC request that we do. We are allowed to make these moves, but we come in front of the Commission first to seek the approval, and these line items, then we'll go to the Department of Corrections for final approval, and then we'll make that adjustment. So, we're seeking permission and a signature from the Commission Chair to make those adjustments. I should say this has gone in front of the Advisory Board, and the Advisory Board did approve.
Okay. Are there questions or comments from Commissioners? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve to make, to move the requested dollars within the KDOC FY19 budgets as listed in RFA 137-19.
Second motion. And moved, and seconded, that we approve RFA 137-19, Third Quarter Budget Adjustments. Further conversation. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry.
Thank you.
Item number 12.
RFA 138-19, Physical Year 20, Adult Comprehensive Plan Grant Application.
Annie?
Again, annual funds we seek through the Department of Corrections. This year, we're required, the request is in $858,164.31, which is an increase of $33,006.32 from the actual award we got the previous year. Again, we run on a fiscal year. These are due to the Department of Corrections, May 1. These are adult services only. They do not encompass our juvenile services and the other things that you're going to hear from me in a short time. We break out our services in the KDOC grants between our juvenile and adult services. 60% is adult services, 40% comes from juveniles, and that's how we break out facility costs and other expenses, equipment and all. That is based on that 60-40 split. We base that on a salary or on a staffing versus clientele basis on both of those. Obviously, our juvenile population's a lot less, as are our staffing on that side, than our adult. And so, we've requested that grant dollars in that amount. It's a review of our past year's trends, monitoring over a three-year period. It talks about issues that we see that'll continue to haunt us with our inability to reach the 75% success rate. We talk about departure cases, which are typically the cases that are, fall upon a criminal justice matrix. They're designed to go to prison, and in all the research and evidence tells us they should be containment-only, but we receive many, many departure cases that come to probation, and that's fine. I mean, we offer those services. They are the highest risk of our population, and that's the largest population that goes back to prison, gets on revocations, and I don't see that declining. Our judges are aware of it, everyone's aware of it, and you realize that DOC wants you to meet that 75% success rate, and when you don't, you lose dollars. And that's just how they are incentivizing you to reach it. We have not found that magical way to get to that rate yet. We usually reach about a 65% to 68% success rate. We're seeing, we're one of four agencies in the state of Kansas that carry the highest-risk population across the entire state. We carry only 8% in the lowest risk, and the rest of them are in that high and very high-risk category. So, I'm very proud of the agency and the work we do. We are not going to be able to meet some of those outcomes, but it's amazing what our staff and the success our clients do reach. Two gaps we're seeing this year that we're going to try to address is childcare for our adult clients. Just coming into the office is an issue, but also for them to maintain employment, childcare is an issue, so we're collaborating with some other efforts. So we're collaborating with some other efforts, and I hope to, CAPS directors here, and I hope to also collaborate and do some grant work and look for that. The other thing is wellness. This has been on my mind for many years, but I'm finally going to do something and not just think about it and look at it. We know that poverty equated into healthcare is poor. People that don't have funds and resources and the abilities, and even the wherewithal to get to the wellness, physical, dental checks, just don't occur. And then we see where we just wrote three new grants for dentures and a couple of other things, and we got those, and that's great, but I think we could not have to do those if we provided something else. So we are partnering with SLYNA Health Care's clinic, and we are going to look at us assisting them in doing some of the initial work inside our agency, the Purple Card and some other things, and then moving them along to the SLYNA Health Care's clinic where, I want to sing the praises of that place, I went and toured it and spent, you know, a couple hours with them, and that is a one-stop shop. You can go there, you can get your medication, you'll get assigned a primary care physician, they do dental, and they do physical, and they even do some minor surgeries. It's an amazing facility. And so we're partnering with them with the hope that we can move more clients and their families. I'm interested in also addressing the youth and their families, even though they're not on services with us, to get those wellness checks and prevent some of the bad habits, but also inappropriate health factors that are going on. So that's all a piece of everything, we talk about that a long time, we submit a budget. Sherry's here, I drag her along, she amazes me every day. She watches everything I say, "Yeah, we'll get that," she goes, "No, we're not," and I say, "Okay, we're not getting that." You know, she is just watching every penny like she had it in her own pocket, and she just does an excellent job on these budgets. And you're looking at five grants here, but add another four or five that we might put together in the next, you know, 12 months. And so the expectation on her, you know, it's easy for me to write a grant, but for her to monitor their budgets and remember that some run on fiscal year, some run on calendar year, and then you have the federal government that runs on, I don't know what year you call it, but it's October to October. And she tracks all that, and she gets it all in, and she follows every quarterly outcome that's necessary. And so I bring her, so she hears me say that 12 times, we call her Smarty Pants at work, but she's amazing. So I couldn't do what I do without her. So we're asking approval to submit this grant in that amount of $858,164.31.
Questions or comments from the commissioners? Is there any public comment? Bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we sign and submit FY 2020 KDOC adult services application and budget as requested by staff.
Second. And moved in second that we approve 138-19 FY 20 adult comprehensive plan grant application.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion does carry. Item number 13.
RFA 139-19, physical year 20, behavioral health grant application.
This is the behavioral health dollars that were released several years ago from the Department of Corrections, well, the legislators, they put out about $3 million, and it's a grab fest, you apply for whatever you can do. We've been blessed every year to get this grant. It does fund three staff, two in my office and one at CKF. We partner with CKF for the substance abuse services and pay a lot of the services out of this grant. This grant is the amount of $244,227.84. So we have to remember salary and benefits, there's three people come out of here, but also a lot of funds for substance abuse, mental health, transitional housing, those kind of things also come out of here. We have an agreement with CKF, and we'll reaffirm that agreement once the grant award has been submitted and we know what our allocation is. Again, I talk about this all the time, but our high-risk, substance addictive, mentally ill clients is on the rise, and I mean, it's nothing I haven't seen, it's a trend we've been seeing for the last five years. These funds are necessary to provide the services needed for those client population. We have had to, because of lack of community ability, we've had to kind of get our staff trained to be somewhat of a mental, mental health facilitators. And we offer free programming inside our office for our mentally ill plus substance abuse clients. So again, I speak and leap bounds for the staff that have taken these high-risk projects on and continue to supervise those. This is due again, May 1. We're seeking permission to submit this grant. I should say that all of these have been in front of the board a week ago, they were in front of Ottawa County yesterday, and all approved and signed, and now in front of Slayne County, and hopefully with signatures, we'll move them on to the Department of Corrections.
Questions or comments from the commissioners?
I just quickly, Annie, it's like one of my questions here on this mental health and what you do here is that, in the studies that we just had done and all this, was there some correlation in between this mental health and our jail bed population, and is there anything that we can do here to help with that?
Well, and I hate to speak too much to it directly, but we know that the mental health, mentally ill population is on the rise, and it's on the rise everywhere, it's nationwide. If you do a little research, you see it everywhere, so that's an issue. And I would say our jail current existence and how we move forward, whatever that choice is, needs to have some specialized beds to address that mentally ill population. Throwing them in general population is not going to be effective. And I think that them, along with the substance abuse clients that are severely addicted, if we can monitor them and give them a little bit of a service there, I think will reduce their return to that jail. You'll see a lot of mentally ill people that are picked up over and over and over, and they're not really, they're more of a nuisance to the community than they are a danger. And so I consider them a lower risk when we give them services and treatment that they need.
Thank you.
Further questions? Public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the FY 20 KDOC behavioral health proposal and budget as submitted by staff.
Second. And moved in second that we approve the RFA 139-19 behavioral health grant application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item 14.
RFA 140-19, physical year 20, juvenile justice comprehensive plan grant application.
Again, juvenile services, Department of Corrections, annual grant. Request is in $777,321.53. Within that is also a prevention piece, and the director of CAPS is here, and I hope you'll at least ask her one question, because she's been here as long as you all have, and bless her heart. That amount is $38,697.52. So how the juvenile services work is, Community Corrections, along with the county, we are responsible for the high-risk juvenile program, which is our intensive supervision program. We also are responsible to give $500 or more, if they requested it, to court services, so they can incentivize their youth population to hopefully not move over to our population. And then also, we have a prevention piece in the amount of that $38,000, almost $39,000. And years ago, we used to get $200,000, $300,000, and we had eight, nine prevention programs. Little by little, the state started taking prevention away and putting it in other pockets of the state fund. We met as a board and decided that prevention piece that was meeting our largest factors was the program at CAPS. And so we partnered with them and kept them on, and they've been gracious enough to do such a great job with the programming with such little dollars. And so I'm very grateful for that, and Lori can speak to it, it's a Spanish-speaking case management program, and I know she can give you a very brief, but I just want to run through the dollars real quick. So 500 for court services incentives, juvenile intake assessment, which is right at the front end, when a youth is either arrested, or all the DCF kids that come in on child and need of cares. Mom and dad get arrested on the highway, they're not able to care for their children, they go to jail, we get the four kids in the family. And the other day, we had a little six-month-old, I think a three-year-old, and she was speaking very well to me, so I'm going to say 10. And we're responsible to find placements for them. We want to keep them together, we want to do all that, but we do that now inside our building because of the graciousness we got with our new building. So they're kept inside, kept in our building, they're not at the police department anymore like we used to do. Not that that wasn't okay, but this is a better setting. And we keep them and feed them and get them the services they need until we can find a placement for them. The other day, we had a group, that family, we had them several hours in the afternoon, and we usually close at 6:00, and several of us stayed until about 6:30, 6:45, until an aunt had come from Beloit to pick them up. And that's our responsibility. And so that's a piece of some of the funding. We do our juvenile intensive supervision program, which is the highest-risk youth. Our community management agency program is taking those high-risk juvenile offenders and moving them outside of their home environment because the court has deemed that not an appropriate environment for them. And then our new intermediate intervention program, which is a diversion program that was adopted a couple of years ago. And so all that comes from this $738,000, and then we add the prevention piece of that $38,000, and tap it all, and it goes to the Department of Corrections. All been in front of the board, all been in front of Ottawa County. Lori Blake is here, so if you have a gracious question for her, just one, just one.
Hello, Lori.
Hello, it's so nice to see you all again.
I guess I could defer to one of the other commissioners for the question.
It's a Spanish-speaking case management program.
So I can just give you a quick overview, I won't take much time, but our family mentoring and support program really is very versatile for the families' needs in our community. It's both a prevention program as well as an intervention program, and the next grant that Annie's going to be talking about falls within the same program. So the prevention piece is when families come to us in crisis and they have experienced something, or maybe they're looking for some parenting skills training, or maybe in this case with the Spanish-speaking families, they're having some issues with services within the community, whether it be medical or educational systems, mental health systems, the legal system, sometimes, it just all depends on what their needs are. It's one-on-one and home, family visitation, they are working on parenting skills training, teaching them budgeting skills, teaching them how to access the services that they need so their families can be successful. And it's 100% spoken in their native language, Spanish, helping them learn how to speak English while they're here as well. So we have two full-time Spanish-speaking parenting skills trainers and family mentors in this program. Half of each of their salaries are paid through this prevention grant. We also take them, interpret for them in court if they land there.
Of the, of your employees, then, and you have two that are full-time in the Spanish portion of it, and it probably overlaps into other things, but how many others are there also?
We have a total of 18 people who are on staff, two of them are bilingual full-time, and then we have two other bilingual, one that does parenting skills training and one that's a childcare provider.
Does that correlation pretty much go with the percentage of Spanish issues that you have with the families? I mean, that's about 10%?
So it's interesting, about 40% of our family services we provide are to Spanish-speaking individuals, which is a testament to our staff and their relationship within this community. Obviously, we do not have 40% of our population here in Slayne County that are Spanish speakers. So we're meeting people's needs, we're trusted partners in our community, and we're very thankful to have the funding through this grant to continue that work.
Is CAPS a multi-county agency?
We are multi-county in programs, so it's not universally, every program that we provide is in multiple counties. But the Child Advocacy Center, where kids come when they've experienced abuse and they go through that interview process that we talked about last week a little bit, that's Slayne, Dickinson, and Ottawa Counties. Anything through the 28th Judicial District is both Ottawa and Slayne County.
All right, well, thank you, Lori.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your service too, and your, I said thanks for the service of your agency and your efforts. So we'll bring it back to the commission for any questions, further questions, comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we allow staff to submit FY 20 KDOC juvenile services application and budget with commission signatures.
Second. And moved in second that we approve RFA 140-19 FY 20 juvenile justice comprehensive plan grant application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion does carry.
Thank you.
Item number 15.
RFA 141-19, physical year 20 reinvestment grant renewal.
This is the final one, and Lori should probably just stand where she was, but this, we received this opportunity to write this grant a couple of years ago, and we couldn't decide, do we want to do something inside our own facility? What did we want to do? Where do we see our biggest gaps and needs? And I called Lori, and I said, "Hey, want to do a grant together?" Yes, we do, and we have a meeting and we sat down and pounded this out. And we looked at the needs of the clientele's that we're servicing versus what she's seeing in the community and developed this program. It's, we're reaping the benefits in this community, our youth and families are reaping the benefits of this. It's in the amount of $157,253. It goes to the Department of Corrections, and it is renewable. We've been very blessed that we've gotten this, and it's family mentoring and in-home services and lots of things. And if Lori just wants to give another little brief, talk about the services our agency provides.
So in this program, we've served 64 youth who have been referred to us through Community Corrections and their families. They agree to work with us and figure out why their youth as a first-time juvenile offender has landed with us. As long as they successfully complete this, then charges are not officially filed. So there's a real motivation there for the families to engage for their child and get to the root issues of maybe why they ended up as an offender. Maybe it's supervision, maybe it's mental illness again, and they need access to some help. Maybe it's some needs within the home, maybe the child has been providing childcare for their own siblings while parents are working. Figuring out what it is in that family structure that has landed that juvenile there is why we're there. And we're really fortunate to have Kristi Green, who was here earlier, but she had an appointment with the family at 10 that she needed to get to. She is amazing, she has her master's in criminology, and her undergrad is in education, and so the blend of that, to be able to work with those families in their home settings and figure out what's taking place, has been very successful. Again, 64 youth and their families have been served in that program since April of last year through this grant. We don't have access to dollars to do things like stabilize housing, or maybe pay for summer school fees, or the SLYNA Restorative Justice Initiative, those kinds of things. We don't have those kinds of resources within our current structure, and this grant allows us to do that with those families and really have a meaningful impact on their life, not only just now, but I think for the future as well. So, any questions about that?
Well, thank you very much.
Just a quick question, and I don't know who it would be, and I probably should know the answer to this, but it's like with us, having our juvenile population housed in Junction City, does that hurt or have anything to do with this at all?
It does not. When that first happened, we were expecting a bad, an impact. We thought that there would be a real burden to the families. And my staff, we had to get in their cars and go see them there. But a couple of years ago, legislators passed a law, and the law was, get them out of juvenile detention. Only the highest of the highest risk are supposed to go there. And so we don't utilize juvenile detention to the degree like, I mean, we reduced it by 90-some percent. We do not have parents complaining about traveling there because we don't have kids there, very, very infrequently are the kids there that we place. The court still utilizes it some, and sometimes we will get a high-risk sex offender that is not allowed to return home because the offenses were with siblings and within the home. And the judge doesn't have a choice, but they're there very short-term, and we find another location for them. Sex offenders are your hardest youths to place in the state of Kansas, but we can find it. It takes some time, but we can find it. So it does not impact. We are placing youth in foster care and other areas instead of in locked-down facilities. And if you look at that, if you went in and you did a little research with the Juvenile Detention Center in Junction City, you know, they partner with many- Detention Center in Junction City, you know, they partner with many communities, they really took a hit with the kids because everybody did what the legislators told us to, get them moved out. That is a part of one of the grants that I presented to you is the IIP program. That is that, get them in differently and address it from an earlier stage of crime at first offense, offer them a diversion program, they participate with CAPS, participate with us, they aren't charged. So, no, the Junction City Juvenile Detention Center, and I, that's why I, you know, we talked about a little bit about reviving something here for juveniles. I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that, I wouldn't recommend that for anybody. We don't need it. We just don't need those lockdown facilities for youth anymore.
Families need support.
Right.
They land there because they don't have the resources that they need, and so that's one of the blessings of being able to use our evidence-based practices to develop those relationships, and, and in their home, you get the best snapshot about what's taking place. When we're able to access them that way and establish those relationships, that's when the most change can happen.
Well, and we talked about that even on the adult side. You don't, you don't take a lower-risk person and put them in a lockdown facility and just warehouse people there. Now, at the Juvenile Detention Center, they did get school and, and other things, but it was still limited. I mean, it's a lockdown facility, it's still a youth jail, and so they aren't getting the care, but when you partner with an agency like ours and CAPS, and you go into the community, and you go into the home, and you address those issues, your success rate increases a lot sooner than it's going to increase by locking them down.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
Questions or comments further? Is there any public comment? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the one-year renewal of the KDOC reinvestment grand, grand award for FY-2020.
Second motion.
And moved in second that we approve RFA 141-19 on the reinvestment grant renewal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our agenda for the, for the, this morning. I want to remind everyone that there is a Town Hall public meeting this evening beginning at 6:00 PM in this room pertaining to the overcrowding of the jail and potential jail reduction of the population. Hopefully, those with questions will come forward. Is there any other business to come before the Commission? I will announce that I did attend the airport meeting last week, and I guess the big thing to come out of there was, you know, in, in the past year, United flights have been coming in here, their deployments are up 61%, which is really a whopping significant number. So, all right, that having been said, I, we will, after an adjournment, we will take a short pause and go on to the Administrator's update, so I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Moved in second for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.